Where it's just, we like to call them kiss your butt turns where you're sneaking through. And then you gotta do that in the winter when it's icy in the roads.
Oh, I didn't want to think about it. I didn't want to think about it.
Now, I'll take this over that up there.
Any day.
And when the talk turns to hobbies, the trucks don't stop at work. In its spare time, it's all about monster trucks and RC cars.
Nice little basketball court right there. My son would like that outside of our house.
Oh, yeah.
That's nice.
Great place to run your little RC trucks, too.
Right. Oh, yeah.
I got a bunch of those I like.
Do you?
Yeah.
Oh, man, do you have the gas powered ones?
I have the electric. I don't have the gas powered. I've seen them.
I just wouldn't like the ones that go fast.
Yeah.
It can be electric or gas, but how fast can yours go?
I have, so I have a couple that can go forty plus.
Oh, yeah.
So they're the brushless motors.
Do you go race them somewhere, like on a track?
No, I just race around my yard. They're monster trucks, so they, you just take those things anywhere.
And they can jump over anything, bro.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
I rip them free to sand and the grass.
Oh, yeah.
Big jumps with them. I break them more than I do.
Right.
You take a big jump, you're like, all right, let's do this. And then you land it, and it's like boom, it's done. You just broke the wheel off or...
But when the workday starts, the focus shifts to keeping the city running smoothly. Every collection has a plan, and behind the scenes, people like Mario Venditti, planner and scheduler for the city, help make sure it all runs like clockwork.
So basically, and I will check them one by one.
Right. Do you really?
Oh, yeah. I'll get out at every one and I'll check. I might take a section and do like three or four streets.
Right. But for the entire city?
Yeah. So here we have contamination, our first tote.
Right.
We have yard waste, which does not belong in there.
Right.
And we're going to end up tagging this, and they're not going to collect it because of that.
Okay. But as I'm familiar with, you write on there exactly what the problem is.
I can check off. There's a spot for yard waste on there that doesn't belong in there, and I'll show you that.
The goal isn't punishment. It's education. Making sure residents know what belongs in the bin and what doesn't.
So here we have, these are, it's a recycling notice. It's not a violation. It's not, it's just a warning. It's just saying that, you know, oops, you had something in here that didn't belong.
Right.
So I will date this. Today's the twenty-fourth. And there's a spot on here. We noticed your recycle container that had something that didn't belong, and there's a spot for yard waste.
Right.
Any kind of branches, trees, plants, anything like that does not belong in there. It's not recyclable. The collection center won't take it. So basically, I just leave this notice on top of the lid like this. Leave it closed, like that. Yard waste, and that's it. And the driver knows not to collect this.
And if there's ever confusion, there's even an app that takes out the guesswork.
So the Recycle Coach app, it's easy. You just put in your street, your zip code, and it will, it will notify you the day before on your phone. You get a notification and say, hey, tomorrow's your trash day, and you put the tanlet out.
Wow.
It'll give you notifications.
Okay, I like that.
So you can't mess it up.
I like that.
From drivers to planners, each role shows the same thing: pride in their work and pride in serving the community.
I do the best I can for you.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November eighteenth. It's November eighteenth of two thousand twenty-five. It's six PM. We're in the city chambers, and I call the city commission regular meeting to order. Commissioners present, Commissioners DeValle, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emmerich, Commissioner Petro. There's a quorum present for the meeting. Also present, Deputy City Manager Yarborough, City Attorney Farino, City Clerk Faust, Board Specialist Linder. We've got Captain King and Fire Chief Titus. Stacy, want to lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you.
All righty. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon to approve the agenda. Let's vote, folks. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, any general public comments?
Yes, we have Valdi Oleander, followed by Yaseen Rozani.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I am Valdi Oleander. I come here in peace. I am not a criminal. Don't treat me like one. I have a dignity. I am instructing, Stokes, I am using word from Florida Constitution. You cannot amend it. I am instructing you to remove cap off my back. Please, learn English, obey your oath, or if not, rescind your oath. And one more time, please move this podium to the middle. Act like civilized mayor, mayor, sorry. Number one, my non-advolent taxes were up three point seventy-four percent. My non-advolent taxes were up ten point two-two percent. Number two, my social security went up less than three percent. Why commissioners want to talk to city employers? Read preamble to the city charter. You will find it to whom you should talk. Who is sovereign, number four, who is sovereign in the United States of America? We the people according to county Supreme Court of the United States opinions. For example, city government is sovereign only among alike, like the city of Venice, Charlotte County, Sarasota County. But never, never again, never above the people. Federal government is sovereign only among, with other nations. What is the sovereignty means? Sovereignty is the highest authority and always stays with the people. That's why you come to election to us. Number five, thirty percent of Americans today view the violence is necessary to solve political disputes. Why? What's wrong with you people? Again, from Supreme Court of the United States, no city was ever built with the sole object of being incorporated, but it is incorporated as affording the best means of being well governed. The power of creating incorporation is never used for his own sake, but for purpose of affecting something else. And since you give yourself fifty percent raise, what is this? Anything else? You don't know? Forty millions of the citizens of the United States relies on SNAP food. Three million Floridians. Why so many are poor?
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Hey, fellow commissioners, how are you? My name is Yaz. I'm a business owner. I own the Burger Kings on Toledo Blade and Tamiami Trail. I want to talk about my first meeting here. I came here during the special budget meeting here in September, and this was my first forum and event like this. And I wanted to talk about the non-advolent taxes. And I kind of, my non-advolent taxes, specifically the road and drainage district, has gone up two hundred percent over the last five years. You guys are all on the same emails with Commissioner Fletcher, Mr. Speaks, and the city manager highlighting, highlighting the questions that I'm asking is, how are the taxes, the non-advolent taxes specifically going up so much? Two hundred percent in the last five years for my two Burger King parcels compared to the two, my other properties and other municipalities like Pasco, city of Newport Ritchie, Belushi County, where there are significantly less. I've emailed Commissioner Fletcher during, shortly right after the special budget meeting, asking him for an explanation. And I emailed him again on September seventeenth and August first. Mr. Fletcher replied by saying that some of his deputies will identify the differences and get more information for me. And then a month later, on November twelfth, I followed up again regarding the change in the mythology. I mean, there's two issues here. There's a spending issue, which I'm not here to go into today, or a change in the mythology. And I believe that the mythology that we currently have for QSRs, for, the mythology in place currently in general is not fair and not equitable. Mr. Speaker replied back on November third, explaining the current mythology. I replied back saying that I did not, it did not answer my question regarding the property taxes, specifically the non-advolent, how it has gone up. I also dug into the expenses in that email of fifty million. Prior to this, I spoke to the commissioners, and Mr. Stoke said that I should talk to the city. I spoke to the city, and the city said that it starts with the commissioners. And changing the use generation, the use trip generation, is it equitable? All in all, I believe we need to get into the same, same room and look at the current mythology, and I'm advocating for a change. Because at this current rate, you're going to have me close down one of my two restaurants when my contract is up. And it's just too high. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. On to announcements. City Clerk?
The current vacancies for the following boards and committees include the Art Advisory Board, Auditor Selection Committee, Charter Review Advisory Board, Citizen Tax Oversight Committee, Community Economic Development Advisory Board, Debt Management Committee, Environmental Advisory Board, Firefighters Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees, Historic and Cultural Advisory Board, Joint Management Advisory Board, Police Officers Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, and Veterans Park Advisory Committee. Sarasota County Advisory Council vacancies include one resident of Northport to serve on the Sarasota Manatee Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. If anyone would like more information, please see the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to consent agenda. Deputy City Manager, any items been pulled?
No items have been pulled, sir.
All righty. Any public comment? Man, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make it. I move to approve the items in the consent agenda.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner DeValle to, excuse me, to approve the consent agenda. Let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on, we have presentations, twenty-five dash twenty-nine eighty-three. Deputy City Manager, you want to introduce this item?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Stacy Alessio, emergency manager, to come and give a presentation for this presentation. Requested to provide additional information regarding the Emergency Operations Center project. It will include after-action items this project addresses and how the space will help meet space needs of the city and how this building will serve the community.
Nicholas.
Welcome.
It is wonderful to be back up here. To give you guys, last time I was up, you wanted me to bring back additional information. We've had additional discussions between now and then, so I'm hoping that this will answer the rest of your questions. We'll go over some lessons learned, the benefits of the EOC, go over the answers to some of those questions, and then one last review of EOC funding. But first, my deputy thought it'd be a good idea to show you kind of how the Emergency Operations Center interacts during an event. So when we're activated, we actually get our main direction from the policy group per our CEMP. We actually have our policy group made up of myself, the city manager, the fire chief, the police chief, the public works director, the utilities director, and our city attorney. So together, we get our main priorities put together. Those go down to the Emergency Operations Center. And based on those priorities, we determine what resources and what strategies we need to fulfill the objectives. And then we coordinate with our departments to utilize their personnel and their resources to get the job done. And then we coordinate with the county, state, federal government, and any faith-based organizations, nonprofits, and private sector as well. And then we also have our JICAN Call Center, which is extremely important to interact with to get information out to the public. So just to go back in time to Tropical Storm Elsa, this was a great example of lessons learned because this was where only the city of Northport was affected. So the rest of Sarasota County had no impacts. It was just a Northport impact storm. And that's because this was mostly a rainfall event, and the rain fell over the watershed. So it was a couple of days later that almost eleven inches of rain that we got in three hours ended up in Northport with four feet of water in the estates. So Sarasota County's Emergency Operations Center was not open because for them, the county wasn't impacted. They had shut down. But we were one hundred percent fully activated, rescuing people from their homes. The big lesson learned here, I'll read the quote directly from our after-action report, was that we need to be better prepared to be self-sufficient, understanding that we will never be able to obtain the resources we will, we will ever need to meet all possible situations. So we should always strive to be able to address the needs of the community in a manner that best serves them, regardless of the conditions, the conditions with what we have. So basically, this is saying that we're not going to be able to ever buy the resources and have every single resource we need for every disaster. So we need to set ourselves up to best acquire those resources after disaster, to organize those, but also to organize the resources that we already have in the way that best serves the community. And the best way to do that is with this Emergency Operations Center. Going up a couple of years, we're now at Hurricane Ian. We all remember what that was like. Record rainfall, almost twenty-two inches of rain over the city, causing citywide flooding, two million tons of debris, statewide impacts, which means that we're now competing with the state for resources. And then bulleted here is the documented, direct documented need for the Emergency Operations Center from the Hurricane Ian After Action Report. City Hall conference room that the EOC is located in is very limited in terms of space. It would be prudent to have an EOC building with showers, kitchens, and storm protection. We need to have a backup water supply. GIS needs to have their own dedicated workspace, and then to continue with planning for a new EOC. And that picture on the bottom right is actually of our comms team working by lantern light, trying to make sure that our community has the information that they need. All right. And then just last year, our hurricane season was that season of close calls. Seventeen inches of rain in Sarasota caused substantial flooding up there. Catastrophic storm surge from Hurricane Helene, it pushed water up the Miaca River. Fire rescue was actually out in unincorporated Sarasota County, assisting with rescues out at some of the mobile home parks. And then Hurricane Milton, we had a pretty big debris operation in the city here from that. We also had power outages that took out some lift stations. We had a little kind of disaster within a disaster-ish when the governor asked if we would support a state fuel site at STC, which was great for us, but that's another story. Personnel issues due to lack of space because everyone's just on top of each other and fighting for space. So we did have a little bit of that. And then just the back-to-back activations. We were here overnight for Helene. We tore everything down to reset everything up for Hurricane Milton. And then those year-round benefits, twenty-four-seven facility readiness to respond to no-notice disasters. We're looking at a potentially intense wildfire season. We're already very, very dry early on in the season and under a burn ban. That's just one example of a no-notice event that would cause us to need to activate the EOC. Space for emergency management, development services, and IT staff. So we'll have office space for those three departments. Conference rooms available for all staff to reserve that large meeting room space for outside partners. So if Kiwanis needed a meeting or United Way, they could reserve through us capabilities to host additional trainings in-house, and then the continuity of government space. So if something were to happen to City Hall, it would be a great space so we can continue to run operations out of. We have a window in there, so if development services needed to do permitting out of the front office or utilities needed to collect bills out of there or something like that, it would be a good space for that. Community benefits, it's a safe building, so it'd ensure that we're able to respond efficiently and effectively during a disaster. Our community education and outreach seminars, so we can get information out to the public. We have so many new residents coming in who have never experienced a hurricane. I think the majority of people when we do hurricane seminars are new residents who have, you know, they didn't even experience Ian with us, so they don't know what it's like. So it's really important that we can continue to educate year-round. Our community emergency response teams are very supportive of this as well. They're always looking for a space to do trainings, and they currently go to Charlotte County, so it'd be great to host them here. Large meeting room space for the advisory board meetings. We'd be very, very happy to host those there as well. And then meeting space for a long-term recovery group, community organizations active in disaster, any other nonprofit, faith-based organization, any partner who would want to meet would be welcome to reserve our space. So getting to the gist of those questions that you'd asked last time, why can't the EOC be a conference room? So our Emergency Operations Center, yes, we have a big space for us to collaborate, but it's much more than that because it's twenty-four-seven operations. You need to have breakout rooms for those meetings. You need to have a kitchen, places for people to sleep, backup water supply, backup power. So it can't just be a conference room tacked on to another building. Why do we need an EOC when the county has one? It's also a great question. So the county, they're fabulous partners. They're a great resource. We are one of four municipalities, and they have very large unincorporated area that they're responsible for. I'm going to give my experience in Lee County as an example. Fort Myers Beach was slammed. They had casualties on the beach. Sanibel and Captiva and Pine Island were cut off from the county, so they were the top priority. Cape Coral, city of Fort Myers, they all needed resources as well, but life safety was much more pertinent in those other areas of the county. So it's really important that when the county has to focus somewhere else, that we're able to take care of our own. And then what happens if we don't build an EOC? We'll continue to function out of, out of City Hall like we have been. We won't be ready for notice, no-notice events, and the building won't support the twenty-four-seven operations or a major hurricane response. And we're asked, why not use FEMA grants? And we did look into this very early on in the project. But the cost to build to the standards required by the grant costs more than what the grant would actually give us, so it didn't really make much sense for us to go that way. And then can we put this building with the new PD headquarters? This project is an immediate need. Accomplishing this need now would be the cheapest possible way to do it. If we put this building in PD headquarters, it would cost that money for redesign, and there would be a cost escalation as well. And then just reviewing the finances for this. With the adopted budget, if you, we're going to have first reading of the budget amendment later on this evening. We'll go over the additional building fund and SRTAC money. Those three things together give us all the money we need to build the building. And then we just have the nine hundred thousand, not just its money, but we have the nine hundred thousand dollars that we are seeking grant funding for, and our grants team has already submitted that up. So they have their eyes on it, and are going to be working on that for us. And then the cost of waiting. So we didn't estimate a cost escalation. Eight percent compounded is the going rate of escalation right now for construction. And it's a little bit over a million dollars each year, every time, each year that we put it up. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Happy to take questions.
Commissioners? Anybody? Got all our questions answered. All right. Any public comment? All right. Stacy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearings, Resolution twenty-two-five dash R dash seventy-one. And this is a quasi-judicial hearing. City Clerk, if you could read by title only and steer in the parties.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash R dash seventy-one. A resolution of the City Commission of the city of Northport, Florida approving a preliminary subdivision plat for Madera at Welland Park, a thirty-two lot residential town home subdivision on approximately eight point six five one four acres, located north of Tamiami Trail, US forty-one, and west of North River Road, providing for findings, providing for preliminary subdivision plat approval, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. There are no aggrieved party status request forms that have been turned in. Can everyone wishing to provide testimony please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Got a call for disclosure of any ex parte communications. Commissioner Petro?
I had a agenda briefing with the city staff.
Thanks. Vice Mayor?
I have none.
Other than my briefing, I also have none.
I had none, mayor.
I have none, mayor.
All right. Then we are ready for presentations. Applicant? That'd be you, Mr. Luzinski. Welcome.
Thank you. John Luzinski, Senior Vice President, Welland Park, and I have been sworn in. This parcel, eight point six acres on the north side of Route forty-one, across from where we opened the Millennium Physicians Group facility about a year ago, a little more than a year ago. It's got thirty-two townhomes. It is part of Village B, which was approved for twelve hundred units. And with this, we will complete Village B with nine hundred and thirty-two units, so roughly seventeen point three percent underneath the density. It'll be a townhome community that will be, will develop here, and probably late spring, Neil Homes will commence construction of the thirty-two simple townhomes. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We have a right-in, right-out onto forty-one. FDOT did not allow full access or even a right turn lane because of the few months of trips that are provided. Other than that, it follows all the regulations and that we do. Because the new ULVC, we're here in front of you with a preliminary plat. Historically, this was part of our VDPP approval, and we would have just gone to final plat. But we're a preliminary plat approval. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Sherri Willett Grandin, Planning and Zoning Division. I have been sworn. The preliminary subdivision plat before you is Madera at Welland Park. It is petition number PSPP twenty-five dash zero one nine zero four via Resolution number twenty-two-five R seven one. The applicant is Christopher Jordan, PE of Stan Tech Consulting Services. The owners are Thomas Ranch Land Partners Village I, LLP. The location is north of South Tamiami Trail and west of North River Road. So this little area is between, if you're familiar, it's to the oasis. Subdivision is to the east, and the renaissance is to the west. The request is to create a thirty-two unit residential townhome subdivision. The impacted area is eight point six acres. So as you see before you on the screen, this is an overview of the subdivision plat. The installation of all required infrastructure, including but not limited necessary water, sanitary sewer lines, roadways, drainage, stormwater, management areas, utility, landscape, and street tree easements, are included on the preliminary subdivision plan. The residential units are within the total allowance for Village B. Sixty percent of the area has been allocated as open space. The preliminary plat does meet the definition of a preliminary subdivision plan according to the requirements of Florida statutes, Chapter one seven seven. And also, the final plat must be consistent with the approved preliminary subdivision plat. In addition to the evaluation, it was evaluative compliance with the city of Northport Comprehensive Plan. This subdivision is consistent with Policy FLU point one eight point one of the Comprehensive Plan, meaning that the preliminary plat application was submitted in accordance with the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. Policy FLU two point one point one, site and subdivision design. Policy FLU 2.1.1, site and subdivision design, um, it is in compliance with this policy as well as the transportation element for sidewalks and connectivity and supporting the bicycle pedestrian system for future residents. It's also compliant with the public school facility element, and a school concurrency determination letter of receipt has been provided by the Sarasota County School Board. It meets objective one, the housing element. It provides additional variety of housing types and affordability to accommodate the present and future housing needs of the Northport residents. And this is a low-density type of project, so low density is typically four dwelling units per acre, so with the eight acres, the 32 units are within compliance of the density. In addition, it's compliant with chapter four, the subdivision standards of the Unified Land Development Code. A formal environmental survey has been completed on the sites, all permits will be issued in accordance with state and federal standards. The site is in a FEMA flood zone AE with a 1% annual chance of flood for which base flood elevations have been determined. And, and I want to add that at the time of the review, I know that there will be fill that will bring up the lot to the correct elevation. Uh, the preliminary subdivision plat went a thorough, underwent a thorough review by the Development Review Committee, which comprises of fire rescue, police, planning and zoning, natural resources, utilities, uh, public works stormwater, and public works transportation. And after the review of that assessment, there were no issues or concerns regarding the subdivision plan. In addition, public notices were mailed to the property owners, as well as the advertisement requirements have been met per the public notice requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. In addition, the city attorney's office has reviewed and approved the accompanying resolution 2025-R71, and it is correct as to form. The planning and zoning advisory board, this petition was heard before them on November 6th. It was approved with a five-to-one vote. Uh, one of the board members dissented it, but did not give any indication as to why. There was a couple of public comment concerning the item from the resident neighborhoods. One of the issues with the question was, um, what type of housing? They thought it was multifamily, and staff stated on the record it is low-density housing. Also, the subject came up with whether a wall or a fence is required for this property. It is not. It would be something that if the developer chooses to do so, they can, and it would have to abide with the regulations. It does meet the buffer requirements and the landscaping requirements. Um, staff is asking that the city commission approve resolution number 2025-R71 for the Madeira at Welland Park preliminary subdivision plat. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have no agreed parties, so, uh, looking for any rebuttals by applicant?
Applicant has no rebuttals. I think Sherri gave a very detailed presentation.
Thank you. And you, Sherri?
Commissioner, staff has no rebuttal. Thank you.
All righty. Then with that, uh, any public comments?
There is none.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Duval?
Thank you, mayor. I just had a question. On the notice to the property owners within the 1,320 feet, uh, was there any kind of a negative response?
Yes, we did not receive any negative response to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. Seeing nothing else, um, let's go to closing arguments. We got staff? Any closing arguments?
Yes. Uh, based on the information provided to the commission and the research with the compliance to the Florida statutes, the Unified Land Development Code, um, staff is requesting approval of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And applicant?
Developers requesting approval of the resolution. We believe this would be a nice addition to Welland Park overall, and will help like a second complete, uh, Village B.
There. All right. With that, all closes public hearing, and looking for a motion?
I'll make it. I move to adopt resolution number 2025-r-71 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval, to adopt resolution 2025-r-71 as presented. If there's nothing more to this, folks, let's vote. Guess I'm the only one who hasn't voted. And that passes 5-2-0. Moving on to the resolution number 2025-r-72. This is also quasi-judicial. City clerk?
Resolution number 2025-r-72, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Northport, Florida approving a preliminary subdivision plat for West Lake, a 156-lot residential single-family subdivision on approximately 164.48 acres located south and west of Prado Boulevard and north of Playmore Road, providing for findings, providing for preliminary subdivision plat approval, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. There have been no agreed party status requests received, and can everyone wishing to provide testimony please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, ex parte communications, Mr. Petro?
Besides my, um, agenda briefing, I have none.
Vice mayor?
I have none.
Commissioner Langdon?
I have none, mayor.
I have none, mayor.
Uh, other than my, uh, uh, briefings, um, I did have one very brief conversation. Uh, just was curious as to the type of housing that was going in there, which I asked Mr. Luzinski about, but other than that, nothing else. So with that, we can move on to presentations. Applicant, you are up.
John Luzinski, senior vice president with Welland Park, I have been sworn. West Lake is on the west side of Prado, south of the Public Safety Building, going all the way down to Playmore, and just east of Island Walk. Within the confines of West Lake, there's an existing plus or minus 32-acre lake that has served as West Village Improvement District primary irrigation lake number one for the last number of years. That pond is being reshaped a little bit and being expanded. This community of 156 lots will have lots that are 65, 75, and 85-foot widths, 140 feet deep. What this community is intended to be is to follow on to Everly. Everly is the 241-unit community south of Manassota Beach Road, just east of West Village Parkway, where we have four builders, three custom and one semi-custom, where homes are averaging, they are range from 1.5 million up to just about $4 million. So this is, again, bringing out, those same builders wanted more lots as they are evolving at more than 50% complete with Everly. So, uh, we have commenced development, site work out there, and this is for the preliminary plat approval for that community. It'll be another, it'll be a very nice community with amenity and gated community.
Thank you very much.
One thing I should add, to the north end, we do have an existing eagle's nest. We have taken all necessary permits and have stayed out of both primary and secondary zones. Uh, once the nesting season passes, we will have a pond that will be part of the, uh, secondary zone, but we will have a public trail that connects downtown to Playmore by the back gate in the Island Walk, so people can walk by it, have a bench on the lake south of the Public Safety Building, so it will truly be an amenity. And some of that has been actually enabled by our friends at Island Walk, who HOA has provided easements for the expansion of the pond by the Public Safety Building, as well as what we're gonna be doing here. So, not only Welland Park's developing it, but I should give a shout out to the Island Walk HOA for being good to work with.
Thank you very much. Staff?
Good evening again, commissioners. For the record, Sherri Willett Grandin, planning and zoning division, I have been sworn. Um, in addition to this item, the next two items I will also be presenting to the commission. Um, as stated, this is the West Lake at Welland Park preliminary subdivision plat, petition number PSPP 25-02711 via resolution number 2025-R72. Uh, the applicant is Christopher Jordan, PE of Stan Tech Consulting Services. The owners are Main Street Ranchlands, LLP. Uh, stated before, the location is southwest of Prado Boulevard and north of Playmore Road. And the purpose of the subdivision request is to create 156 single-lot family residential subdivision. The impacted area is 164.48 acres. Again, you could see here on the site plan where the proposal is, where you can see the highlights of the lot sizes based on the different colors here in the legend. Um, this will include the installation of all required infrastructure, including water, sewer, utilities, roadways, drainage, stormwater management areas. The residential units are within the total allowance of Village D, and it, and the lot size and standards meet the requirements of the adopted Village D district, district pattern plan. In addition to that, 64% of the area has been allocated as open space. The preliminary plat does meet the definition of a preliminary subdivision plan according to the requirements of Florida statutes, chapter 177. In addition, the final plat must be consistent with the approved preliminary subdivision plat. This is also consistent for compliance with the comprehensive plan. The preliminary plat was submitted in accordance with the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. It also meets policy FLU 2.1.1 regarding site and subdivision design, also meets the transportation element, policy 5.5 for sidewalks, connectivity. It also meets the public school facility element. There is also a letter of concurrency receipt from the Sarasota County School Board. In addition, it does meet the housing element, objective one, to provide a variety of housing This is compliant with the city of Northport Unified Land Development Code, chapter four, regarding the subdivision standards and requirements. And a formal environmental survey has been completed on the property, all permits will be issued in accordance with state and federal standards. The site is in a FEMA flood zone AE, 1% annual chance for flood, which base flood elevations have been determined, and the project will be built in accordance to be above those. This has undergone, um, staff review through the Development Review Committee, which comprises of, uh, fire, police, utilities, planning and zoning, environmental services, public works stormwater, and public works infrastructure. Um, it has been evaluated for zoning compliance, layout, environmental impact, and has been assessed, um, very rigorously by the Development Review Committee, and they have not identified any issues or concerns for moving forward in the development process. The notice of public hearings have been advertised and notice had been set in accordance with the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. The city attorney's office has reviewed the accompanying resolution, 2025-R72, and it is correct as to legal form. Uh, this was heard before the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, November 6th. They voted 6-0 unanimous. There were no issues raised at the, the meeting. Staff is requesting approval of resolution number 2025-R72 for the West Lake preliminary subdivision plat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Applicant? Any rebuttals?
Applicant has no rebuttal.
And staff?
Staff has no rebuttal. Thank you.
All right. And then we are good. Looking for any public comment on this?
There is none.
Commissioners, anything to this agenda item? One quick question, Mr. Luzinski. The pond that you're reconfiguring is, how much additional capacity is it gonna add? Because I know that, as you said, that's a primary.
I didn't calculate that. We are in roughly six acres, so six, 240,000, probably about 2.2 million cubic feet.
Beautiful.
Roughly. I'm doing the math in my head.
Perfect.
So it adds about six more acres, and will, is interconnected with downtown.
Good, good, good.
Again, hold all the water we can.
Perfect. All right. Um, other than that, uh, looking for any closing arguments?
Ted again?
Any closing arguments?
Um, staff is, um, asking that the commission would approve resolution number 2025-R72. Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant and the custom home builders of Welland Park would ask for approval.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm closing the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion, folks.
I'll make it. I move to adopt resolution number 2025-r-72 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to adopt resolution 2025-r-72 as presented. Let's vote on this. And that passes 5-2-0. Moving on, our Welland Park night, resolution number 2025-r-73, this is another quasi-judicial. So, city clerk, you're up.
Resolution number 2025-r-73, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Northport, Florida approving a preliminary subdivision plat for Fire Station 87 to create two parcels. Parcel one for a public safety facility and parcel two, an open space park on approximately 4.77 acres located at the intersection of the northeast corner of Manassota Beach Road and Prado Boulevard, providing for findings, providing for preliminary subdivision plat approval, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. There have been no agreed party requests, forms received. Can everyone wishing to provide testimony please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God? Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Commissioners, ex parte communications, Commissioner Petro?
None, besides my agenda briefing.
Vice mayor? Commissioner Langdon?
None for me, mayor.
None for me, mayor.
And other than my briefings and one-on-ones, you know, over the months, I've had some general discussions. This actually is a stone's throw from where I live, so I have asked on a couple of occasions what was going there and, you know, just general information, so, other than that, I have no, nothing more. Um, so with that, moving on to presentations. Applicant?
All right, I'm gonna throw you a knuckle curveball. John Luzinski is the chairman of the West Village Improvement District, who is the current landowner of the property. I've been sworn. This parcel is 4.77 acres, and we originally planted it when we were building Manassota Beach Road, knowing this was in our post-annexation agreement for Fire Station Number Two. Uh, as we started working with, uh, the fire team and Chief Titus and Chief Early, uh, it became obvious, because we did do the stormwater off-site, that the whole 4.77 acres was not needed for fire facility. Typically, we try to size those for four acres, presuming we're gonna do onsite stormwater. So, working together, we are splitting it, uh, into two parcels. One will ultimately be deeded and dedicated to the city with Fire Station Number 87, which is under construction today, and we are shooting for completion early summer of next year. We'll probably be done before the new fire truck comes, which was ordered about two years ago already. The other portion, the West Village Improvement District, will maintain ownership, and we are under development of a neighborhood totlot park, uh, with a bathroom facility, shade structure, but the totlot, which is interesting, there is, we are theming it after fire, the fire facility and a fire truck theme. Uh, we anticipate completion in the next 30 days of that, and we will open it to public right after the first of the year. Obviously, try to keep it down, traffic down a little bit till we finish completion of the, uh, fire facility, but both will be done here in the next six months, and this is gonna be a real positive addition to Welland Park. And it's tied together- And it's tied together with most of the neighborhoods with our trails and bike paths. And I do need to make one correction. She said the northeast corner of Preto and Minnesota Beach Road, it's actually the southeast corner of Preto and Minnesota Beach Road.
Thank you very much. Staff?
Again, Commissioners, Sherry Willett Grandin, Planning and Zoning Division, I have been sworn. As you see before you, this is the Wellon Park Fire Station Number 87, Preliminary Subdivision Plat. Petition Number PSPP 25-03327, Resolution Number 2025-R73. The applicant, as stated, is John Lizinski, Chairman, West Villages Improvement District, and David Gomez, PE, was also the joint applicant. The owners is the West Villages Improvement District. Let's see, what location we have? Is it Scrivener's here? Okay, I just overlooked you. The request is to subdivide tract 102 of Minnesota Beach Ranchlands, platte number one into two parcels. So the current land configuration, there is a approved site and development and master infrastructure plan. So that was contained for both the fire station as well as the park, which is why the park was and the fire station was allowed to develop. This is the last portion of the replating of the subdivision into two plots, two lots. One is for the new Fire Station 87, and the other is for the playground area. The total impact area is 4.77 acres. As you can see here on your screen, the configuration and the lot separation, to the south is the fire station, as well as there's an area for some future development for the building in the southern portion. To the north is where the playground area is. So the required, the fire station and playground include the installation of all the required infrastructure, water, sanitary sewer lines, the access drives, drainage, and stormwater management areas. The site lighting, landscaping, and a reserve area for a future building, as previously stated, is allocated on the fire station site. The project is located in Village J, and the proposed floor area, excuse me, ratio is 0.05%, with a 65.2% of the project has been allocated as open space. The preliminary platte meets the definition and requirements of the Florida statutes, Chapter 177. The final platte must be consistent with the approved preliminary subdivision plan. This is consistent with Policy FLU 1.8.1 of the Comprehensive Plan. The preliminary platte application was submitted in accordance with the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. It does meet the housing element policy 1.9, where it states here that housing should be located within areas where supporting infrastructure is available or planned, including emergency services. The fire station does meet that requirement for emergency services. It also meets the recreation and open space element of the goal for the Comprehensive Plan, and that is regarding the playground area. This will provide additional recreational resources for the public. Is this also in compliance with Chapter 4, Article 12, the subdivision standards of the Unified Land Development Code? A formal environmental survey has been completed on the site. All permits will be issued in accordance with state and federal standards. The site is in a FEMA flood zone X, which has a 0.2% chance of annual flooding. In addition, the preliminary subdivision platte underwent a thorough review by the Development Review Committee. They evaluated the components of the site for zoning regulations, environmental issues and concern, access, and they found that the proposal does meet all of the necessary guidelines and regulations of the ULDC for moving forward in the development process. Notice of public hearings were conducted in accordance with the requirements, I mean, public notice, excuse me, and also the advertising requirements in accordance with the Unified Land Development Code. In addition, the City Attorney's Office has reviewed and approved the proposed Resolution Number 2025-R-73 as to form and correctness. The November 6 Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously 6-0 to approve the Fire Station 87 Preliminary Subdivision Plat. Staff is requesting approval of Resolution Number 2025-R73, the preliminary subdivision platte for the Fire Station 87. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no rebuttal. And Ms. Sherry?
Staff has no rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. No agreed parties? Any public comment on this, City Clerk?
There is none.
Then Commissioners, anything to this agenda item? Seeing nothing? Then let's move to closing arguments. Staff?
Yes, based on the information and presentation provided to the Commission, staff is asking that Commission approve Resolution Number 2025-R-73, the Fire Station 87 Preliminary Subdivision Plat. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Not a closing argument, a closing statement. This site plan here, the public safety building, we did perimeter with all landscaping. We worked with Lennar, who's the developer of Wellon Park Golf and Country Club, because this is towards their northwest corner. They participated with us, so we have a six-foot masonry wall on the east and south side of the parcel to further protect, you know, from noise of residents of Wellon Park Golf and Country Club from this facility. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. They worked with us to provide something we haven't done in some of the other, the other fire stations in town or in Wellon Park. So, again, another amenity, that wall is up and landscaped already.
Thank you very much. With that, I guess we are ready to close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make it. Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-73 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Petro, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to adopt Resolution 2025-R-73 as presented. And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on. D, Resolution 2025-R-76. One more quasi judicial. City Clerk?
Resolution Number 2025-R-76. A resolution of the City Commission of the City in Northport, Florida, approving a preliminary subdivision replat for Wellon Park Downtown Phase 5, extending Wellon Park Boulevard right of way and creating preservation conservation area, stormwater management, open space, and future development tracks on approximately 76.7308 acres located west of West Villages Parkway and east of Preto Boulevard, providing for findings, providing for preliminary subdivision platte approval, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. We have not received any agreed party status requests. And can everyone wishing to provide testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge to help you God?
Thank you very much. Any, we're looking for disclosure, ex parte communications, Commissioner Petro?
Nothing from me, except the agenda briefing.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Commissioner Langdon?
None for me.
And Duval?
None for me, Mayor.
And none for me. With that, moving on to presentations. Mr. Lizinski, you're up again. This is your last time, you know?
This is the, well, I've got some statements after this, but this is the last. John Lizinski, Senior Vice President of Wellon Park, and I'm speaking as Wellon Park. This platte divides the last portion of Village D west of West Villages Parkway and east of Preto. Basically falls north of Oak Bend, which we planted last year, and we just opened for sales recently, and existing downtown. The exciting part of this is it breaks that remaining land into two parcels bisected by the extension of Wellon Park Boulevard. Wellon Park Boulevard is where we have the roundabout at, you know, downtown. Wellon Park Boulevard runs through downtown. It now extends, ties into the road that formerly was our, the road to our building, and we've reconstructed it and aligned it. And it will, when we extend into Village E, the 60 acres we took back from the school district a couple of years ago, will connect downtown to the stadium. It will also connect north of 41 to a parcel we sold yesterday for commercial, 50 acres to the Benderson Group, which we will be working on right after the first of the year. So, going to be able to tie together a lot of great uses with the street. Along at the northwest corner of this platte, right south of downtown, on the west side of the street, there's an irregular shape, I'll call trapezoidal parcel, that we're in the process of building, a dog park, highly amenitized dog park. We moved some big trees close by, and that will be opening, now kind of one of all the facilities, toys and things come in early part of December. So this is exciting just because of the connectivity it's providing to some of the major attractions that we've been able to develop currently and in the future here in Wellon Park.
Thank you very much.
Again, good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Sherry Willett Grandin, Planning and Zoning Division, I have been sworn. This is the preliminary subdivision replat for the Wellon Park Phase 5 via Resolution Number 2025-R76. The applicant was Joseph Kelly of Stantec Consulting Services. The owner is the Minnesota Beach Ranchlands. Location is west of West Villages Parkway and east of Preto. The replat request is to extend the Wellon Park Boulevard right away and to create preservation and conservation areas, a stormwater management area, open space, and future development tracks. The impacted area is 76.7308 acres. The project is located in Village D, and here you can see an overview of that in the dark. Highlighted line is where you can see the extension of the roadway as well as the stormwater and the conservation areas. The preliminary subdivision replat meets the definition requirements of Florida statutes, Chapter 177. The final platte must be consistent with the approved preliminary subdivision replat. This is consistent with Policy FLU, Future Land Use 1.8.1 of the Comprehensive Plan. The subdivision replat application was submitted in accordance with the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. In addition, the extension of the Wellon Park Boulevard right away completes the street network to support future residential and mixed growth, and it does meet the transportation element goal 1. In addition, it's compliant with Chapter 4, Article 12, subdivision standards of the Unified Land Development Code. A formal environmental survey has been completed on the site. All permits will be issued in accordance with state and federal standards. The site is in a FEMA flood zone X with a 0.2% chance of annual flooding. In addition, this has undergone staff review through the Development Review Committee comprising of fire, police, utilities, public works stormwater, public works infrastructure, planning and zoning, and natural resources. In reviewing all of the information, there was no issues raised or concerns indicating that the proposal meets all the necessary guidelines and regulations to move forward in the development process. Public notice and legal advertisement was done in accordance with the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. In addition, the City Attorney's Office has reviewed and approved the accompanying resolution, 2025-R76, as to form and correctness. This item was also heard before the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, November 6, and they voted unanimously 6-0 to approve the resolution and the preliminary subdivision platte. There were no issues raised. Staff is asking that the City Commission approve Resolution Number 2025-R76. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willett. All right. Any rebuttals?
No rebuttal.
Ms. Willett?
Yes. Staff has no rebuttal. Thank you.
Right. And there are no agreed parties, so we're looking at any public comment? Then we're on to Commissioners. Any questions on this one, Commissioners? Only comment I would have is, I'll be delighted to see this done, because this will really complete the connectivity there. That's a really key piece with all the apartments going up and all the other stuff going on, commercial development down there. That's really going to give another ingress and egress for everybody. It's gonna, it'll be huge, so. That is...
Mr. Mayor?
Good. Yes, ma'am?
Check your screen.
Ah-huh, Mr. Langdon?
Thank you.
I thought you weren't going to say anything this morning.
I didn't say nothing. I said very little.
Oh, okay. You're on the floor, ma'am.
Thank you so much, sir. It seems like yesterday, John, when you took me on a tour of this massive area, and there was not one building, it must have been four or five years ago now, and you were kind of pointing out where everything was going to go, and in all honesty, I couldn't see it. But it's been an incredible experience for me to see the different villages coming in and the downtown coming in, and then to see villages be completed. It's just really been an amazing experience, and you guys have been great partners with the city, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And you know what the most exciting thing about this platte is? In about 60 days, our beautiful building is going to go the way of the buffalo. It's going to be demolished.
The old building, the old office?
And we will be moving into one of the two new buildings in downtown about the middle of December.
End of an era.
End of an era.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the one other comment I would, I would have is, you know, for the public who are listening, if you want a perfect example of how you can put together a really group of diverse, a group, really a diverse development, there's everything from affordable and senior housing to apartments, to townhouses, villas, condos, commercial retail district downtown with restaurants and stores, tons of open space, an incredible lake with recreation areas, and price points from the threes to four or five million dollar houses, all within a relatively small footprint theoretically, a small footprint, and it shows how they can all work well together. That level of density attracts businesses. Costco came to Northport because of West Villages and the density and the population. So, you know, for all the angst and for all the aches and pains that growth brings, there are some tremendous benefits that go along with it. When it's done properly and it's planned properly, it can be beautiful. I heard with four quasi judicials here, open space in the area of 60%. That rings my bell. It should ring a lot of people's bells, so kudos. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And pass it on up the line. Appreciate it. With that, where are we? We are at... Ah-huh, Commissioner Duval, you're up, sir.
Yes. The mayor missed my light on the last issue. John, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the adaptation on the fire department property. Now you're covering a safety and a quality of life thing with a park. Thumbs up. Thank you.
And again, we could not have done that without cooperation with the fire department, because originally that whole site was earmarked for their needs and showed them that they didn't need all four acres. They gave up about a quarter acre, but we were able to work together with Chief Titus and Chief Early to create a win-win. And like the mayor said, it's again, cooperation and partnerships.
Good job.
We've been able to do that for the last, at least six and a half years, I'll say that.
Thank you. Up to closing arguments, staff?
Staff is requesting that Commission approve Resolution Number 2025-R-76. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Lucinski, any final closing arguments?
In this case, I have no closing arguments.
Thank you, sir. Which class closes this public hearing? Request a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-76 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon to adopt Resolution 2025-R-76 as presented. And that passes 5 to 0. Thank you very much.
Because I was a few minutes late. I wanted to make two public comments. Would the mayor give me a minute to make those two public comments?
Sure, this is my last meeting as mayor. If I break any rules, well, I'm entitled. I ask for forgiveness instead of permission.
I just asked Deputy City Manager Yarborough to pass out to the Commissioners, because I only brought six copies. I came from a public meeting with Sarasota County, open to the public, on the South River Road improvements that we have coming up. As you know, the West Villages Improvement District, and underwritten by Wellen Park, we have taken the lead on the engineering for South River Road on behalf of the county. We are front funding $7.3 million of engineering dollars, which will get back to us through reimbursement of any construction costs. Today was the public here, public meeting, so that was passed out. Spencer Anderson, head of Transportation, was there. The meeting went really well. We anticipate having full permits in about 78 months, and contemplating, per our agreement with the county, they must bid the job within eight months, or six months, of our permit. We anticipate this segment, the first segment of road that would be improved would be 40, from 41 to Winchester, but we are also designing that Winchester element all the way to the county line, so that's a whole hurricane evacuation. So I just wanted to pass that out to you so you get an idea of what's going on. It's in the city, but it's really not city. And second to that, everybody knows the new high school is gonna be opening in August. Partly, the county came to us last year to take the lead on the engineering, knowing the Minnesota Beach Road, River Road intersection, which is vitally needed for the high school, wasn't gonna be there. Spencer Anderson, again, great to work with, and we have worked out a deal. We're basically, Wellen Park is gonna be constructing. We got the permit last week. We've got pre-construction, our, yeah, pre-construction meeting tomorrow. We are gonna be putting temporary signals at the corner, Minnesota Beach Road and River Road, extending pavement to the south to widen it, to complement. We anticipate there's gonna be 18 to 20 buses in the morning coming from the south to the new high school, as well as installing a right turn lane for westbound Minnesota Beach Road. Our goal, knock on wood, we need a little help from FPL, they gotta move a pole, is to have those signals working by the start of spring training.
Yes.
And that'll open up that intersection then for all the Wellen Park residents going down to Boca Grande or Inglewood or something like that. But two things, we're working outside of what the city would normally approve, but affects the city greatly. Police is, is working with us on traffic control, as well as Sheriff Hoffman and his group, so we're getting help from a lot of people to do something real quick that could be a win-win. So I just wanted to let you do, know that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the extra couple of minutes. Have a good day.
Again, kudos. Perfect example of what happens when you collaborate with your, with your neighboring partners, because that saved the West Villages Improvement District significant amounts of money, the connectivity of Plainmore and Minnesota Beach Roads to River Road, significant savings by packaging that and allowing a collaboration between the county and the district. So, again, it always pays to work well with your neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finished with our quasi-judicials, so we're moving on to Resolution 2025-R-85. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Resolution Number 2025-R-85, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, authorizing and directing the acquisition of certain real property and/or easement interest by any legal means for the construction of the Hillsborough Boulevard, Cranberry Boulevard Intersection Improvement Project, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for findings in public necessity, providing for terms for temporary construction easements, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you very much. Deputy City Manager Yarborough, this is your item, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. This resolution authorizes and directs the use of domain to acquire temporary construction easement on the south Cranberry Boulevard area necessary for the construction of the Cranberry Boulevard, Hillsborough Boulevard Intersection Improvement Project, AKA Roundabout. And this project is a cost share with Charlotte County, and staff's here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions on this adjourned item? One question, Deputy City Manager. What do we mean by temporary?
Literally that. I don't wanna step on the public works director's toes, but, you know, when you do an construction project, it kind of spills out, you know, there's piles of dirt, there's, there's equipment, there's, you know, it's literally temporary. And we did our best to play nice with our neighbor, the racetrack, but they were not communicative, so we're going to have to help them with y'all's help in order to make this project happen. Chuck?
Right, we won't own the property.
No.
This is just for the project. It'll go back to them.
Right.
It's just to negotiate the cost and the use of that easement.
Gotcha. Commissioner Duval?
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, you just kind of addressed what my question is. We're trying to acquire property. Now, this is temporarily, and I was gonna ask, you know, what kind of, you know, backlash have we had? And does this portend any permanent, you know, when we look for any permanent property, you know, for the roundabout, are we gonna have trouble acquiring the property?
Sure. So, Chuck, speak, Public Works Director. This is the last piece we need. It's just this temporary construction easement. We just have been unable to have talks with Racetrack, as Deputy City Manager said, they're unresponsive to our communications, so this, we're asking you to allow us to force their hand, to come to the table so we can finish this project. But beyond this, we don't need any more property at that location.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Right. See nothing more from Commissioner. Any public comment on this item?
There's none.
Then I'm closing this public hearing. Request a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-85 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval. Adopt Resolution 2025-R-85 as presented. That passes 5 to 0. Moving on, Resolution Number 2025-R-86. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Resolution Number 2025-R-86, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, granting a non-exclusive permanent easement located on portions of property lying in Section 21 Township 39 South, Range 21 East Sarasota County, Florida, and bearing Sarasota County Property Appraiser Parcel Identification Number 0977001030, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for filing of documents, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Deputy City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution for Partition 81, project grants a necessary easement for power line to access the property to perform necessary relocations of their infrastructure. The resolution also approves the underground installation agreement needed to do the work with a power line.
All righty, Commissioner, any questions, comments, concerns? Going once, twice, and three times? Any public comment?
None.
Then I'm closing this public hearing. Request a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-86 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon to adopt Resolution 2025-R-86 as presented. And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on to ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 2025-34. I need a motion to direct City Clerk to read by title only.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to direct City Clerk to read by title only. Passes 5 to 0. City Clerk?
Ordinance Number 2025-34, an ordinance of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget and capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 for additional funding for the emergency, sorry, for the Emergency Operations Center, Project F24 EOC in the amount of $1,685,105, providing for findings, providing for posting, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Deputy City Manager, your item.
Yes, sir. This is pretty simple. This is the budget amendment to add the additional funding for the EOC that was presented to you previously.
Yep. And Commissioners, any questions, discussion on this item?
Let's get it done.
I think we're ready. Any public comment?
There is none.
Then I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
I'll make it, Mayor. I move to continue Ordinance Number 2025-34 to second reading on December 9th, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval to continue Ordinance 2025-34 to second reading on December 9th, 2025. Let us vote. And that passes 5 to 0. We are coming down a home stretch.
Not quite.
You don't think? A heavy lift. Got through the heavy lift. All righty, moving on to Ordinance Number 2025-35. I'm gonna need a motion here to direct City Clerk to read by title only.
Second.
Got a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to direct City Clerk to read by title only. Let's vote.
I need candy.
And that passes 5 to 0. City Clerk, you're up.
Ordinance Number 2025-35, an ordinance of the City of Northport, Florida, amending water and wastewater capacity fees, amending the code of the City of Northport, Florida, Section 78-30, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
You, ma'am. Deputy City Manager, you're up, sir. Your item.
Thank you, sir. This ordinance presented is for the adoption of the proposed capacity fee increases to cover the capacity-driven capital needs of the utility system, both water and sewer, wastewater. We presented to you these conceptual increases or proposed increases at the September 23rd regular meeting. Staff's here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Being done, I'm looking for any public comment?
There is none.
And then I'm gonna close this public hearing. Request a motion.
I'll do it. I move to continue Ordinance Number 2025-35 to second reading on December 9th, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to continue Ordinance 2025-35 to second reading on December 9th, 2025. There's nothing more to that. Let's vote, folks. And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on to second readings. Ordinance Number 2025-32. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Ordinance Number 2025-32, an ordinance of the City of Northport, Florida, establishing a schedule and location of City Commission regular meetings and workshops for the 2026 calendar year, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And there was one change on this ordinance from first reading to second reading, and that is the change of the January 6th meeting to January 13th to accommodate the strategic planning session that we have already scheduled.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions on this? Are we good with this schedule? All right. Seeing none, any public comment?
There is none.
Then I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
I'll make it. I'll move to adopt Ordinance Number 2025-32 as presented, with the date changed for the January 2026 10:00 AM meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, then I got a motion by Commissioner Petrov, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adopt Ordinance 2025-32 as presented, with the date changed for the January 2026 10:00 AM meeting. There's nothing more to that, but let's vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Moving on to general business. We've got 25-2841. This is a discussion of possible action regarding City Commission Board and Committee assignments for fiscal year 25/26. City Clerk, this is your item.
Yes, this is, so annually each year at this time, we do the assignments for the outside boards and committees that you are primaries and backups on. This is not for the Florida League of Cities one. That one is due at a different time of the year than these ones are, so this is just for the other general boards. And the only change that is, will mandatory change because of who the mayor will be, so the Council of Governments will change to the mayor who is appointed tonight. And I did add in the backup a calendar that shows when the meetings are, so far, what I've received from all the organizations of when the meeting dates are, so you'll see which ones do overlap, so.
Gotcha. Hey, Commissioners, any questions on this? Commissioner Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I currently have two assignments, the Economic Development Corporation and Teen Court. I would like to maintain both of those. Teen Court has a three-year board expectation, so I wouldn't want to give that up before then. I am scheduled for Coastal and Heartland National Estuary. I think it was Commissioner Duval who sat in for me. Their meetings conflict with my board meetings for Sarasota County EDC, so I am truly unable to make that meeting. If another commissioner could pick it up, I would appreciate it.
Commissioners, anybody wanna grab that one?
If I may, Mayor, I would further point out that both myself and Vice Mayor Emrich already have two board assignments where we represent the city and the other commissioners, including yourself, Mayor, once you roll off as being mayor, so I would suggest that those with one assignment consider picking up a second assignment.
I have two as well. I have MPO in tourism.
You're an alternate.
No, I'm just kidding.
True. Well, you are dropping cogs, so, I mean, you could pick up another one.
I never have the time to do it. The heartlands just doesn't work. Just doesn't work for me. What are we looking at? Can we, is it possible to bring that up on the screen so we can see the schedule? Do we have that?
I can find it by.
Do you want to take?
Now, what they need, just to see who's got it. Yeah, just want to see who's got what here.
The benefit of paper.
We got to spread them more. I mean... I've got two, you've got two.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Straws.
We just got to pick them up or we go bear. I mean, Commissioner Petrov, what do we got? You've got Minnesota League on the second Thursday.
So that board has three meetings for the year, and the only one that it does conflict with is EDC annual meeting.
Is the which?
Is the EDC annual meeting.
You guys, I mean, I can't take anymore on. I have a lot of other boards I sit on outside this, plus the, you know, Florida League of Cities, plus it's, for me, a campaign year. I mean, I'm going to be swamped, so, I mean, I can't pick it up. I couldn't make it the last time because of all the conflicts on what we want to do.
I'll take it.
Oh, we have a volunteer.
You're a good man, Demetrius. You're a good man.
As long as it doesn't conflict with the Minnesota League of Cities.
It does not.
It does not? Okay.
All right, well, that takes care of that one. Thanks for volunteering, and that's a... That is a help. What else we got? Yeah, is there any? Anybody else got any issues with theirs? Or everybody else is good, what they got? I'm good with my MPO and tourism. They keep me busy. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Petrov.
Thank you very much, Demetrius. It's nice of you. All right, do we need a? We need a motion, City Clerk? Anybody want to take a swing at this one?
I'll take a swing.
Yeah, that's right. Why don't you, Commissioner Langdon, since, like, you were the one that needed to change the schedule, would have kept the motion simple, you know?
I know, I know. I move to maintain the city commission board and committee assignments with one change, and that is reassigning Commissioner Petro to the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary partnership with Mayor Stokes as the alternate.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor, and to maintain the current city commission board and committee assignments for fiscal 25/26, except for the Coastal Heartland Committee, which Commissioner Petrov will take. So with that, let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to general business, 25-2902. It's discussion of possible action regarding First Amendment to the Agreement by and between the City of Northport and Red Speed, Florida, for the speed detection camera systems. Deputy City Manager, your item, sir.
Thank you, sir. Although we adopted this kind of recent, well, very recent, there's some things that we're recommending in this amendment. The First Amendment to the Agreement is effective as of the date of the last party approval, so we piggyback on this. We need to have our contract match up with the piggyback contract that we're using. The term of the First Amendment to the Agreement shall have an initial term commencing on the date the agreement is signed by both parties and expiring on June 24 of 2029. The summary report, another changes the summary report of the monthly receipts gross less calculated fees net, shall be sent to the city's accounting manager and Police Department Senior Business Manager. The Fourth Amendment change includes a new Exhibit B, which is a certificate of liability insurance. This replaces the existing B, which is also a certificate. It's more updated certificate of liability insurance. And then finally, a new Exhibit C, which is the City of Northport Insurance Requirement Form, has been included in this First Amendment to the Agreement. Staff's here to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner, is anything to this?
It's nothing major. It's just...
Mostly housekeeping and getting the contract.
Tightened up.
Tightened up and on a timeframe. Commissioner Petrov?
Thank you, Mayor. I think as a city, I believe we missed the competitive bidding process by going piggybacking of Palmetto, or is it Plantation? I think it does save time, but reduces competition, especially if there are any local or regional vendors. That's my opinion, and it's just as a taxpayer and public official, I would want to have more visibility of vendors who might bid. I looked it up, there are about 20 vendors in the state of Florida, and we chose only one because of someone else chose one. We don't know how much. I don't know if we, as a city, looked into how much or how many, how much time they spent or how many vendors they looked through those. But we, as a city, we did not have any requests for proposals, so... But this piggybacking process for major public safety program such as this involving recurring revenue would, in my opinion, again, would greatly qualify the city for our own bidding process, and I would like to know why we did not go that route. That's one question. The second question, this company that has or had problems with two other municipalities, if I'm not mistaken, locally, regionally, and yet we did go with them, so I just wanted to bring this to the attention of this board at least and to the public, that I'm for transparency. But piggybacking, going after somebody else's chosen vendor reduces the transparency, not to mention competitive advantage. So my question to the staff would be, why did we go off of somebody else's rather than doing it ourselves?
Piggybacking is allowed under Florida law. We use it frequently. We use it in utilities, we use it in public works. A lot of our asphalt that we buy is piggybacked off of Charlotte County's, and we don't piggyback off of anything that's not competitively bid out. It wasn't necessarily competitively bid out by us, but it was competitively bid out by another governmental agency. So we use piggybacking a lot, frequently. As far as this particular instance or the other two questions you had, I'll defer to Captain King on that.
Captain King for the PD? As far as us looking at other companies, we did look at what was around at the time when we began our search. Most of the pricing that was put out were all around the same area. Some of them weren't giving us the option of them placing items. We would have to purchase outright to have the devices placed, which would change the complete structure of how we were going to enforce them. On top of that, looking at what Plantation did, on to your questions of what the other issues were in some of the other jurisdictions, that was in the very beginning of this, that they've worked out those kinks and found out some of those were input errors that weren't verified. So we did look into both of those issues at those jurisdictions, and those issues have been rectified on both ends of us verifying the information that we're pushing forward and with who's putting the information in on the back end.
City Attorney? And just to follow what the manager said, the piggybacking process is not allowed, not just under Florida law, but under our own code. So it's 2034A, I think. So it's permitted under both state law and city code.
Yeah, I was aware of that, obviously, but I also want to bring this to the board's attention, that the same company that we hired or the company that we chose, they did the study of a violation. I think there's a conflict of interest when they did have that presentation last time by saying how many people violated the speed limit, which was kind of conflicting when I read it through. So that's another thing I want to bring into the attention. When we hire a company or as a vendor, and that the same company does the study, I do believe there's a conflict of interest, and that was presumably exhibited, that they did it, and I guess nobody brought it up to the attention of this board, but I do believe that if we, any company we hire, and the same company does the study, there's a conflict of interest. I'm talking about speed limit study they did over a five-day period or whatever.
The speed study?
Yeah, speed study.
Yes, sir. That study is the data that's pulled from the radars, so I don't know how it would be a conflict of interest if that company is going to do another one, whichever company we hire, is going to do their own study because they're going to want to verify the data that they're using to go off of.
Yeah, I just think, you know, they could have done better hiring somebody else and presenting the study to the board and not doing themselves. But that's just, you know, my opinion.
Was the report statistical in nature? In other words, it wasn't opinion-based, was it? It was?
No, it was from the data exactly taken from the radar that was placed out at each location for the timeframe of the week.
Yeah, so it's just fact-based. It's not a report that recommends we do anything or use anybody or do it. This was just, we're giving you, so whoever would have done it, if they had done it at the exact same time, would have come up with the exact same statistics, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Well, actually, if I can, it's just, to me, it seems a little bit odd, because not one car went 35-plus miles per hour from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, but more than 4,000 cars went 35-plus miles per hour for the 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM hours. So there's a big discrepancy, or for the better lack of words. The 8:00 AM hour and 3:00 PM hours are when the school zone lights are flashing. It's a parking lot, and it's a rare occurrence, someone even has the ability to go 30 miles over miles per hour. I guess my, I should be very specific. I do believe it's a study, because the study does not elaborate in the details. We don't know how the study was conducted, how did they arrive at these figures, how does the 31-plus miles per hour represent, and 31-plus over the posted speed limit or the actual speed limit of the vehicle? And another one is where the data from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM and from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. But it's just, to my opinion, it's skewed, to say the least. Because it's a parking lot there during the school hours, and people cannot speed there, specifically on the major roadways we're talking about.
I guess I would ask our City Attorney, we have, I mean, this is a tightening up of the existing, but we have a binding contract that is we speak, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
What we're doing with the mandating this, and I would advise that we accept the amendment just because of the piggybacking issue, but to be clear, we do have a binding contract that we have right now.
Commissioner Duval?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address my fellow commissioners' concern. I came here earlier today by way of, I got on Toledo Blade at the corner of Price, and I traveled south to 41 on Toledo Blade. The only vehicle behind me that did not pass me, and I had my cruise control set at 45 miles an hour, which is the speed limit on Toledo Blade, the only vehicle that did not pass me was a city development services truck.
Thank God.
We had, and I was watching, I was glad, you know, I was thankful that they did not pass me. And that's generally my experience in this city. I do drive by cruise control. Doesn't look good for a city commissioner to be getting speeding tickets. Plus, I don't want my insurance rates going up. And I do continually have people right on my rear end, I have people going by me. We definitely do have a problem in this city, and when it comes down to the safety of, you know, not just our children, but people crossing, you know, trying to cross the roads with their bicycles, their e-bikes, and other things. I think this would be a good program. It's going to wake people up, and we do have the option, if things don't go right, we can get out of it, you know? That's part of the program. It's going to, you know, it's going to cause some concern for some people, but if you don't speed, you don't have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right.
Can I add something? I just want to make sure that publicly it's been stated. My name is Irina Koharenko, and I'm Finance Director. So the City of Plantation went through a long process of getting their solicitation. So besides Red Speed, there were others who submitted their proposals. There were a total of eight firms that actually submitted, and so they went through the, you know, there was a selection committee, they did an evaluation. It was a full process that they went through to select it. So it wasn't just, they just picked the firm and went with it. Just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Petro?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't minimize the issue, I just, the points I brought up is, and I did not know that there are eight companies or vendors were used. I just want more transparency from the staff, and another one is the study that could be better done by the independent company, but I do realize the issue, and I know we have a contract, so we better follow through the contract.
With that, any public comment?
None.
Then I'm looking for motion.
I'll make it. I move to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement by and between the City of Northport, Florida and Red Speed, Florida LLC for the speed detection camera system for school zones as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval, to approve First Amendment to the Agreement by and between the City of Northport, Florida and Red Speed, Florida LLC for the speed detection camera system for school zones as presented. Let's vote, folks. And that passes five to zero. I guess that's the only item, right? We're done?
Yeah.
I'm not putting this in a gavel?
Nope. Keep it.
I can keep it? All right, thanks. I knew you all feel that way. Moving on to final item of the night, 25-2840, discussion of possible action regarding the nomination and election of a mayor and vice mayor, this being my last meeting as mayor for this year. So if I think the protocol, does the mayor nominate, make a nomination?
No, the mayor does not.
Oh, okay, well, it says that.
Mayor requests nomination.
Then I'm requesting a nomination.
I'll make one, Mayor. I nominate Vice Mayor Emmerich to serve as mayor for the upcoming year.
And it does not require a second, I believe?
It does not, because it's just nominations.
That's correct. Do we have any other nominations?
I nominate Commissioner Langdon for vice mayor.
We're not on vice mayor yet, sorry.
We're not there yet.
But thank you.
I thought you guys were in a hurry.
Not that much of a hurry.
Mr. Efficiency Officer.
With that, I need a motion then. With that, I need a motion then.
I move to elect Vice Mayor Emrich as mayor.
I'll second that. So with that, let's vote, if there's nothing more to it. And that passes five to zero with one stipulation that there be no hurricanes during your year, sir.
I had one the last time.
Exactly.
Did not need another.
There you go. Moving on to vice mayor, I am looking for nominations.
I'll make it. I nominate Commissioner Langdon to serve as vice mayor.
Second.
You don't need to second it.
I'm used to it.
We have any other nominations, sir? Are we good? All right, then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that. I move to elect Commissioner Langdon as vice mayor.
Now can I second?
Now you can second. There we go. Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by the Vice Mayor to nominate Commissioner Langdon as the vice mayor. And let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Before we go on to final public comment, I just want to say it was a pleasure to serve this year. I especially want to thank the general public out there for being as nice and civil and respectful, for the most part, during my year. And it made it a lot easier for me. I didn't have to throw the gavel at anybody or throw anybody out, so I truly do appreciate it. And it was my pleasure to serve each of you.
And you forgot to say the meetings will get shorter.
Well.
Maybe not.
With you as mayor, no doubt. And with that, I'm looking for any general public comment.
None.
Well, then, we can move on to Commissioner Communications. Commissioner Petro?
I have none.
Vice mayor, now mayor.
Who?
Commissioner Langdon.
I just want to thank Commissioner Duval for my nomination. Thank you very much, sir.
Commissioner Duval?
Yeah, bear with me, folks. November seventh, I attended the groundbreaking for SNH, Sumter Hospital. Proud to be there for that and happy. On November tenth, I attended Veterans Day Ceremony at City Hall. I also spoke to four groups of fourth graders at Toledo Blade Elementary School about city government. November eleventh, I attended the Veterans Ceremony down on forty-one. November thirteenth, I attended the Sarasota County Legislative Delegation Meeting in Venice and listened to our mayor give a good speech. And on November fourteenth, I attended the Peace River BBQ Tour. And that's it.
Very much. And I myself also did, attended the same items as Commissioner Duval mentioned. And it was my pleasure to speak at the delegation meeting. I made it a point to politely request that as our state reps go up there and debate the issue of property taxes, that they give lots of careful thought and consideration to how their decisions may impact us here at the local level. And, you know, hopefully, at least those three were listening. So we appreciate all they do, and we appreciate them carrying our sentiments back up to Tallahassee with them. So with that, let's see, we got anything from Deputy City Manager?
Commissioner Stokes, it was a pleasure. Congratulations, Mayor Emrich. Happy Thanksgiving to y'all and to everyone out there.
Thank you very much. City Attorney?
Couldn't say it better myself.
And City Clerk? Yeah, well, regretful as it may be, it's seven fifty-one, it's a wrap. This meeting is adjourned.
Learned a lot today. Had a great experience with the gentlemen from Solid Waste Division of Public Works. What I learned today was that we have a lot of programs I don't think citizens are aware of or take advantage of, whether it's cardboard collection, whether it's tote cleaning, or also just the.